All right, Tom, Tom, Tom. We're gonna try to get started here with a little exercise. We've got a lot of folks here. See you. Speak to you and a lot of things to pass. So we'll call our commission course to order. This time we'll have a little call. We want to welcome everybody. Thank y'all for coming. Mr. O'Callaghan?
Here.
Mr. Owens?
There.
Mr. Andrews?
Here.
Mr. Eaton?
Here.
Now, this time we'll pledge allegiance to the flag. If you mind saying that, basically. Salute, pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the state of America, and to the republic for which saints one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Another prayer. Lord in heaven, we thank you for another day you've given us. We thank you, Lord, for your sacrifice. Thank you for your love and thank you for your grace, Lord. We pray for anything that would have troubled us here tonight. Lord, we'd be pleased to view and we'd give you the thanks. Thanks for all the thanks and praise and my prayer. Amen.
Amen. This time we have Ms. Sandra Kent and Mary Thomas to come and speak with you. And this is concerning retirement increases. I think some of you have had paperwork on this in the past. Ms. Kent?
Just going first. Got a handout just in case you didn't want to talk to me today.
And they got copies. That's why I'll find them. The Retired State Employees Association sent me. I am representing them as well as Cleveland County Chapter of ARSA. It was my understanding. And I included a letter in there that Charles sent back in June for the 31 retirees that got approved of $22. And it's $14,089. It's on one of y'all's forms. I would just like to reference. It's June 27th, the letter to y'all. The first one they sent me was for Chilton County. It was $38,000. So I hope y'all didn't get one that said Chilton County. My mistake. They sent me one back. But it's the bonus that was approved in 2022 for the $2 per month. Alabama State Retirees Association is the only advocate in the state of Alabama for state employees, county employees, and city employees. And I received mine because I'm a state employee. And it came out of the state DHR budget. But the local and the city has to approve their own. There were 5,500, I believe, agents who's in the county and the state that did not approve it. So in the 2023 legislature, they tasked that if you approved it up to October 31st, those 31 retirees would receive their bonus check in December of 2023. So I'm here today to ask y'all to consider giving it to them. A lot of them gave a lot of years. With the state, I had 33 years in one month. So I know a lot of these gave a lot of years for it. I also gave y'all this letter that's the second chance retiree bonus. It's any local government retiree receiving ERAS retirement benefits that retired prior to March 1, 2022. Did not receive the 2022 retiree longevity bonus last year. And it's $2 per month for the 12. It'll be $22 per month and then times the number of years. And they use the example as 25 years, they would get a $600 bonus check. There were 281 local government, city counties, and public boards that did not approve the 2022 ARSA appeal retiree longevity bonus. Some local officials told us at the deadline did not allow them to factor the payment into their budgets. And if funded, Act 2023 provides 5,500 local government retirees a second chance to receive a much needed bonus. You can pay that bonus if y'all vote to let them have it. You can send a long song by October 31st. Also included in the commissioners who ran, I think, a motion that y'all have. I just wanted to share that with y'all. You can pay it for one year, make monthly payments on it. So I have a few retirees that I was able to locate. I only got the 31, but I found a few that was willing to come tonight. And I'd like for them to just introduce themselves and share with y'all the total number of years I have with them.
I'll go first. Mary Thomas. I served in the county administration office in the finance wing department as county clerk for 25 years, four and a half months. Thanks.
I need to say again, I have to clear my head out. 13 years.
Tim Gosuch, served 26 years with Cleveland County Sheriff's Department.
I don't know about those others, so I guess y'all are on the retirees. Y'all still work. I would just like to ask y'all to, you know, to bring it up tonight, to try to reach that deadline. I know what my bonus check helped me. I think I went by the fire. So I know there's 31 employees. Many of them still live in the county. You know, they're, they worked hard for the county. Probably some of them want to serve on some of the boards that y'all have. Because I've had trouble finding people to serve on the different boards. But I would just ask y'all to really consider them and their families and if y'all still will, to grant them the bonus.
Mr. Owens has a question.
Well, I guess, do we know what the total of retirees from the county that we would be picking up? How many? I know it says $600 employee. How many are there?
Oh, on the back of one of them, it says it's 31.
31?
And I don't know.
They all get $600?
No, it would be based on their number of years. Like I have 33 years in one month.
Wow.
So I think they only gave me 33 years on my study. But it's a total. Y'all gave during the bonus years on '07, '08, '14, '15, y'all granted it. And then in '17, '18, y'all then approved it. And so it would be like eight years now that they haven't gotten a bonus. And I know I went years and years retiring in 1998, but I didn't have any extra money to pay them.
I understand $14,090 is what they actually come out of the county's budget?
I think each one of y'all commissioners have what I gave. They just shared.
Okay.
They couldn't see anybody from the government. And anything to, it's unpressible.
14,090?
Is that correct? Please. That's what I received as well. That's $14,090.
They give their check in December. I'm gonna let Ms. Thomas talk to y'all. Thank y'all for letting me speak for the 31 employees.
Go ahead, Ms. Kent. Y'all all know me, Mary.
That's I, Mary Thomas. And thank you for allowing us to join you today this evening for your meeting and for being former employees of the Cleveland County Commission. We're all prepped up. We come to you with diligent service to the commission and to the citizens of this county with many years of labor which we recognize. We all share the same concerns of pocket inflation and cost of living increases. I'd like to bring to the attention of significant revenue that the county is receiving from the SSGT, which is the simplified seller's use tax. That began by the State Act of 2015 for R.A. that allows eligible sellers to participate in a program to collect a flat 8% seller's use tax on sales made into Alabama. The Act of 2017, '82 allowed the distribution of sales revenue from the sales tax to the county or locality which in equality is shielded, which is mainly all income sales. And that revenue is, I don't know if it's actually EMR, please, going into our general signs. Cleveland began collecting that revenue in 2017, 2019, which began with a projected revenue of $60,000 in 2019. And it has increased in revenue to the current '22, '23 budget of $370,000. 23 of our 31 retirees are general sign former employees and eight of the 31 are gasoline inject former employees. We thank you again for letting us address you concerning the 23 second chance retiree bonus and ask that you consider the opportunity to let these former county employees know the important role they play in shaping the county departments into what they are today with their faithful, many combined years of service. And I'm gonna let you know that I'm still serving in the capacity of Department of Human Resource Forward as the secretary. And that amount is just a one-time long song bonus. Thank you so much, Mary.
Thank you.
Next, we have, I know we have Chad Rocker here. And you have a guest with you, Chad, to speak. Yes.
Thank y'all for letting us come here. This is getting somewhat challenging. I have a little information of what actually she's presenting. Even with the years. Well, you just got back from that place. I know we're working with Tim Rocker. When the time just kind of hit right with this. Ms. Case called me after I went to Georgia for a little short vacation. And it was just in my mind, as I was riding through Delonge, I noticed, it was around right before the fourth of July, they had these markers that she was gonna tell me about in the city and outside on different roads, but honoring the deceased veterans of the area. And I just thought that was really neat. It brought a light to that community. That's a neat place to go as we're experiencing tourism and stuff like that. I try, when I go places, I try to see a little bit of what works there. But that just sucked out too, the way they went there. And so she called about a week, maybe two weeks later. It was fresh in my mind, so I wanted to help her as much as I could. But I let her tell you more about it. She helped develop that in Delonge and get it going. I think, y'all been here for a while.
We've been here a little over a year.
Two. So she's wanting to try to service us here. She's already been in contact with Albot and the city of Ramburn. I think the mayor's on board with it there. But what I think we're trying to do is get Albot's permission, which we all know sometimes. But I think it would help if we had, maybe just could have like a, I don't know, just a letter, maybe, that y'all support this. That might be them, because I think it would not mess up their grass cutting. So I think the times that we would, that they would do this would be in the middle of it, so.
So what you're saying is, where do you want to place this? Is like where there's a marker, where the city limit, I mean, where the city already has their markers, where it would be like, you don't want to just run the round.
Wait, I was gonna let her explain all that. But the way I understand it, it's, some of it's gonna be on the state roads. So we would need their permission to do it. That's, that's why I was kind of leaning on y'all to see if there was anything that you could do, just to jump it.
They do in Apache, in Apache. Well, there's several of the cities in the state. That's, that's Albot's road that's already doing.
And even if Albot did not agree with it, maybe we could find an alternative. So that's, I just wanted her to present and sit there with you. A complex is what you mean.
And that's why I was thinking maybe some places where there's already some markers, not to make it work.
It wouldn't be that.
Because you don't want to spend a lot of time getting them knocked down. Because sometimes the grass along there, by the way, you wouldn't see that. Or you just wind up.
But I'll let Ms. Case present. And I'll visit you too.
Some of these were, they were remade, weren't they? They were, they were, what, three times a year?
Three times a year is what we had planned on doing. And first of all, I'm Ron Case. And I have been a Cleveland County resident for a little over two years now. My husband and I came from Delonge. My daughter was here and she had two granddaughters, so. We had to go. Within here two years, we, I also have a small business in Ramburn for small furniture making and restoration business. Southern Farmhouse Company, right on Main Street in Ramburn. So I kind of have a vested interest in what's going on in Ramburn. And just a little bit about myself. I have been a media planner. I've been a book planner. I've been a fundraiser for 501s for most of my life as well. This program, we started in the year 2000. Major Paul Hanson is, he's over at ROTC at the University of Georgia. He started this program and I was fortunate enough to be able to be asked to be on this committee. So it's a program that's near and dear to my heart. My father was a World War II veteran. He was 170 airborne. And he was wounded jumping out. He was not normally close, but he was wounded and he seemed to have a heart. And he is deceased. He's definitely marked in the album collection. But one of the reasons why I want to see if we can get, I want approval from Albot, that's what I want. I really don't want to, yeah, well, maybe, no one will say anything. I don't want that. Because we're asking people to help purchase the materials for these. I'm calling the markers, they are crosses. And I want to be responsible for those people's money. And I don't want to put it someplace where somebody's gonna say, no way, maybe my daughter will register. And then, you know, here we have spent this money for, and I don't know that to happen. So I'm asking your help to help make him this Albot, if you can, that it's a good project.
I know I'm making what Albot power Thursday, but not a problem. I just wonder, it's really tough, even in our city. I mean, we put out politician signs, I mean, then finally say that. It's like they wait, they say, just put it down, then they go down, hold it down. I just want to figure out what Albot power, with what you're talking about, one of the crosses with the name. Would they say as long as you didn't get to point A, where it's maybe just this high up, or you just physically mounted to the pole? Now, I don't know, I don't know why I'm saying this. I'm gonna, I'll bring that set up Thursday. Because I'm telling you, sometimes a brick and nail, nail you sign up there, you have to pull it hard sometimes to take down. But it's a lot easier to, I'm just saying that they'd be outside of line unless someone knocks power hole down. And it lasts a lot longer than trying to just put it in the ground.
Yes. I don't know if you've had a chance to read the material. This is just typically what we have done. I'm not saying this is the way it has to be. But in the past, we have done, they're one by threes or one by fours, which are actually three and a half inches. And we make them three feet tall. Pole. The tip or the top of the cross would have the, whether they were MIA or W or, in my case, my father had purple heart. We would put that at the top. On the crossarms would be the name of the event. And going down would be the conflict in which they served, whether it's World War I, II, Korea, Afghanistan, whatever. Would that need to be on the bottom of that cross?
I'm glad to get a lot of support in Cleveland County with it. But I just wondered, how many are we talking in this flag in Cleveland County?
That's why I don't know that. I do know that when we started this program in the year 2000 in Delonge, the very first year, we had 28 veterans and I had 10 volunteers that helped put these out. Now, I'm gonna tell you, they're not gonna just be moved down because they're putting them out with angle iron. So it's gonna take someone digging them up. Because with all the semis going by and everything, and there's a lot of semis on the 46, that, you know, we don't want them to be knocked over. But.
But she's got some pictures.
They should be going away.
Okay, okay, okay.
I'm just trying, I'm just trying to figure out, keep them from getting knocked down because I can't tell you the ones that are going to go down.
Well, in the year 20, 20, the year 2000, we had, I'm sorry. Yes, I was saying, we had 28 crosses. In the year 2018, which was my retirement from this program in Delonge, was my retirement from that program, we had 718 other crosses. I don't think we have that many to loopholes. But it would be nice if they would.
So how long do you like them up?
It depends. What we have done in the past, and like I said, this is not, this is how we have to do it. What we've done in the past is we put them up the week before Memorial Day.
Okay.
We've taken them down the week after the Fourth of July. Now, that's a, that's a long period and it doesn't have to be that long. It's just like I said, with angle iron, if you're trying to put them up in July and we haven't had any rain, that's hard. It's hard to do. We can do that. We can do that if that would be more favorable. And then we try to put them up the week before Veterans Day and have them taken down the week after Veterans Day. Three different holidays that is truly where we should be recognizing our veterans anyway.
And I, I'm totally, I'm totally prepared to go to Albot and talk to them. I just, it would help if y'all, if we could do a reservation or just when y'all's laying on, but hey, this is what we're supporting. I think it would help.
Do have Mayor and Council in Ramburn on board. But I know that they don't have a part, you know, they're hiding voices.
And that's what, that's what she was kind of saying about, she's been told, it's like, we're not, we're not going to tell you not to do it, kind of thing. But she wants, and I agree, we need to have something in writing that, hey, you can, you can do this, this time period from Albot or whatever you say. So be it.
Have y'all reached out to like Apache and?
No, I want to bring this to y'all first.
How they were able, because this is right down the main.
Well, it's, it's the same program. They, based on their information from major events. And it's that physical program. It's done in Aspen and it's done in, we're just, I like it. I know it's done in Mr. Hudson's, they're, they tell you.
I'll find out.
Major Hudson pulled me. Now, I don't know how they do it. I don't know how they get rid of that.
I'll, I'll call.
But I do know it said that Albot cannot give us permission to put them on the road. But it did say that it would be very difficult for them to tell their workers to pull up a veterans marker. So that's not, that's why I'm really not comfortable with that.
It keeps them from having the liability if they give you something in writing. And they're probably not gonna see that.
But I was looking at the, the Albot's website too. Most of our roads in Alabama, the width of the lane is between 10 and 12 feet, depending on the amount of travel on it. And I know going through Ramburn, it's too lane on both sides. So that's 20 to 24 feet. And I know that the, our limit starts at the center and is 33 feet out. So I really, if I'm going to be compliant, I have to be at least nine feet from the edge of the road off. And I'm of the opinion that if I'm driving, it's gonna distract me more to look nine feet than it is to look three feet right here. So I think it's more of a distraction to do it nine feet off. But if that's the only way we can do it, then that's the only way we can do it. But I'm hoping somehow we'll get special permission to do this three times a year is what I'm hoping.
Would you just ask them for a letter from you?
That's why I just would, y'all, it would help me convince them.
All right. Would y'all consider adding something to the agenda? Maybe.
I mean, I can tell you, you can have experience. Albot wouldn't allow us to put up the sign with table eight to say, mountain center this way.
It's just media support, you know, whether I'm a member or not, you know. It was, we were there supporting. I love seeing it from my, from the, I have to tell them, so I have to. You know, that, that 31 members are.
Is it a state room?
It's a state room. It's in Georgia.
You could put them in the state of Lincoln, so you wouldn't have to worry about.
We do. I found that.
But it's still, it's still a state room. We have to, we have our state.
Well, she's, she's coming to ask you for a letter. And she wants it, and because she lives in Ramburn, I think your pathway is 46 is what you're hoping for.
I'm hoping.
That's the most traveled.
And I believe that this year, we most likely, if we could get it done back in Ramburn, we used to start in Ramburn. And you know what? My, my goal, my wish would be that we could come away definitely because we have that many people who want to honor their veterans best. Right now, we're starting in Ramburn.
No, no, I'm just saying in a bit, if you would like to, we could add it to the agenda to, for us to deal with our support. Is that good?
And then I'll follow up with that and come back to y'all.
We appreciate it.
Thank y'all.
It broke it. It broke it. Can't take it anymore. I didn't have good news for you. Ah! I'll pull you hung out with, girl, and that. All right, so John, you have your thing?
I know, it was a real question we talked about.
Okay. And we do have, we got some things on the agenda. Tandy, have anything, City Health?
I'll be brief, brief.
You'll be brief?
Brief, I'll be brief, that's it. Economic Development, I'll be brief. So a few things I want to mention too. We're still working on the true brand expansion. Chad and I and the Senator have met. It's good, it's a big project. It's a very, very big project. So we're helping them to try and navigate some things to make it easier and make that project move smoothly. New businesses. There's nothing official, but there's a few things that have been talked about at the Hollis area. And there's officially is a gun shop coming up in Hefflin. It's gonna be on Holiday Nine. I'm not sure if you guys all know where Brandon Harland's building is. They're gonna be leasing from Kim. They're on their property. And then across the street will be a Dollar General Market. And then they'll close the other Dollar General down. Of course, still, it's on the, the family Dollar in Ramburn is still, unless something else happens, because I thought the writing is still on the table. So. I have sent a few invitations for a call we're having tomorrow. Anyone wants to participate in this, it's a rural economic development covering southern counties. It's something that Jackie Lowery wanted to do. Terry Smiley, under his direction. He's really big on economic development. So they're pulling southern counties together. And we're having a call at 10:00 a.m. in the morning. You can zoom in or you can come to City Hall and we'll put it up on the screen and I'll do it together. So just let me know that it's at 10:00 a.m. in the morning. And, let's see, let me see. And I found out this job encompasses just a little bit of everything in county. I mean, to every organization, every group. And I'm trying to help with as many things as I can. As most of you know, the rodeo is coming to Ramburn. I hope everyone supports that. I think that's a really big deal. It's great for Ramburn. I think all the residents are getting really excited about it. It's gonna be the 22nd and 23rd of September. So I'm really excited. I think it's gonna, it's gonna do big things out there. Speaking of the chamber, they have hired Christie Cochran as a temporary staff person until they can hire someone. So I'm trying to work real closely with them to make sure that we can make a good transition. I'm still doing all the ribbon cuttings and things until they can get, you know, someone in there. But the ribbon cuttings have been really good. We get, let those families there and let them put a face to me and to her and that we're there to help. We went out to the one in Ramburn yesterday. Our little theater, it was just, it was just really nice, really nice to see. People are still opening businesses at home. And it's because they want to be at home. And they want to do something in their community. And that's just always good to hear their family stories that they have. The last thing is Leadership Cleveland. I just told Ryan, we're without a director of extension again. She went and took another job, just went by her name, Randy. So that being said, there was Leadership Cleveland last year. So we, we work too hard and we don't want to see that go away. For those of you that went through Leadership Cleveland, it is a great thing. So what I'm trying to do this week is trying to get anyone that's interested. I'll send you an application. I believe it's good for any department in the county. I just believe it makes your employees better to know what's going on in their county. So if any of you, you'd be elected official, you know, you can be an employee, any department, just let me know and I'll get you an application, get you any of the information that you need. Any questions?
Thank you. Was there a schedule on, on you guys, you know, trying? Was there a schedule on, on you guys' horse, you know, trying to, trying to do something this year or trying for next year?
Unless something happens really quick, November eleventh, but if not, next year.
So, um, I was just wondering about the, I was talking about the Veterans Day being, being November. So if you guys want to talk about it, we'll have a work session next week to connect to the agenda possibly next week or something like that. You don't have to do it tonight, I'm saying, and that also will give you a chance to talk.
To.
Talk to Tandy, also concerns this group to retire. When is the deadline for that?
Second, third of October.
The motion is to be made.
Okay.
The money doesn't have to be there, they have just the resolution. The resolution's in.
All right. I think I've covered everybody that needed to speak.
Can I just add, if, if they choose to not do it, that legislation is no longer available. They will have to wait until another bill goes through the House, and can't go back. This is a made-up fear issue.
Okay, this time we have no bid opens. I'll award your presentation, your study, public views, consent agenda. It appeared to me that everything was initially except one. Uh, and that would be the resolution presented, uh, in file concerning, uh, the corner, and I can add that as F. On U business. Looking at the consent agenda concerning that, I'll entertain a motion. I have a motion by Mr. Hendricks, a second, by Ms. Cobb. Any discussion? All in favor saying aye, or motion cares. Moving down to new business, whereas the sheriff has a question, this is I made. An additional job title with a description being added to the county. Added to the county list of jobs, whereas the position will be titled Sheriff's Supervision Sheriff's Deputy, and will have a pay grade of seventeen, whereas the commission has been presented the job description of a new position, therefore the Cleveland County Commission agrees to the addition of a new job position. I'll entertain a motion. There is no motion. Is that right? Correct me if I'm wrong. All right, moving on to new business I and B, whereas the sheriff requests a change of his, his department organizational chart, whereas the request will remove two sheriff deputy positions and replace them with sheriff supervisors, sheriff deputy position. Therefore, the Cleveland County Commission agrees to allow the change of the sheriff department organizational chart. I'll entertain a motion. No motion. Moving on to I and C, whereas the Cleveland County Commission previously agreed to earmark two hundred thousand in funds to come from the general fund for the building of an animal shelter for six months, whereas the six-month period continued. Earmark, these funds will expire August twenty, uh, August two thousand twenty-three. Therefore, the Cleveland County Commission agrees to extend the deadline for another six months to expire in February twenty twenty-four.
Motion.
I have a motion, and second, by Ms. Cobb. Any discussion? All in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay. It's three to one. I have it. New business I and D, whereas the Cleveland County Commission must from time to time seek bids for certain supplies and equipment in order to ensure efficient and effective operations of county initiatives while ensuring all state purchasing laws are abided by. Therefore, the Cleveland County Commission authorizes the county engineer to award bids for the following annual maintenance supplies. Maybe anybody can see that's hot asphalt plant mix, FDR, children contractors, traffic, uh, I guess that, should that be stripes? Stripes and markers, Ozark, striking, stone, double award, Vulcan Material Company, Mid-South Pay, uh, Pay Plant Mix, double award, Vulcan Material, Mid-South Pay, business. Did I say that quick? Charles E. Watts, coal mix, double award, Mid-South, Pollard, Lot, Vulcan Material, Micros, Surcy, Whitaker, Contracting, Traffic Science, Traffic Science Incorporated, Vegetation Maintenance, IBM Solutions LLC. I'll entertain a motion. You two, at the same time, which one? This, this time it'll be the motion. You will be the second.
Anybody?
Mr. Hill's going to be the second. Any discussion?
Uh, lady, I have a question on the education. When these bids are done and they come before us, they're always out, they won't be, uh, in one big bid. What I'm saying for us to pass?
Yes, so this is stuff that I pull from.
Right. Then, then each, each company's going to be, you know, they're coming in one separate bid.
No, that's what this is. These, these are all individual bids. We're just advertising all the bids, accepting all these bids. But no time. These are all individual bids.
You're awarding these.
You know, I don't like that vegetation being put in with all the others, so.
And it's practice of their business. It's nice, I mean, it's.
I've called it to a vote.
You already vote, or you got any other discussion? You got the motion, right?
Oh, it's my part to do it.
Is it go, all in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay. Ayes have. I and B, whereas the Rebuild Alabama Act requires that the annual transportation plan be adopted for the next fiscal year by the county commission no later than August thirty-first, whereas the county engineers provided a list of possible projects. With these regulations or with expenditures are attempted, which are intended to be made in the next fiscal year. Therefore, Cleveland County Commission approves the following projects to be included in the transportation plan. Project one, County Road thirteen, spot level, JG treatment, traffic stripes, and RPMs one hundred thousand. Project two, County Road ninety-five, spot level widen, uh, JG treatment, treatment, traffic stripe, and RPMs at three hundred twenty-four thousand nine hundred eighty-two dollars and nine cents. Project three, County Road seventy-six, equals spot level widen, JG treatment, traffic stripe, and RPMs at three hundred twenty-four thousand nine hundred eighty-two dollars and nine cents.
Oh, my question.
We have a second, also, any discussion? All in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Motion cares. Now moving to F, right? Ready for F?
So is it, I don't know, is the projects that we did last year, is any of them done?
So some of them, we still have some of those.
Not one we had in more, but you didn't get the one we did last year.
The money, it's a little obligated projects, it's just not.
But you have to do it before the end of August, you can't have them. Okay, I just, I just, we only got a year of work worth of work in the book, I don't know.
All right, this is item F, and this is dealing with a resolution. But when the consent agenda did not pass, or did not get issued. So whereas the corner for Cleveland County has asked that he appoint Sawyer Downs as deputy corner, whereas the county attorney has provided information to the commission to relieve concerns with, um, familiar relation of a corner to appointed, did I pronounce that right?
Close enough, familiar.
Familiar. Did I say that quick too, my business? He's kidding. Right, right, and I, I knew what the word meant, but I just, just want to make sure I pronounced it right. I'm always trying to better myself, and you can always learn something. Therefore, the Cleveland County Commission agrees to the appointment of Sawyer Downs as deputy corner. I'll entertain a motion. There is none. So we will move on reports from the staff. Your county administrator, Ms. Cobb.
Okay, I've told, I've told a few things.
Did you add the orange thing?
I've got, I, I can't add that, add them. I've packed up some resolutions, so I can't really add them. You have the votes that have them, if you want to add something to the agenda after.
I was in worry that you want to add something.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion if ready. Okay, the need to be added, this one?
Yes.
Okay, so we're looking at adding a, adding something to the agenda. Whereas Commissioner Cobb requested use of her discretionary funds for the purchase of tables and chairs for Rosewood Community Center. Therefore, the Cleveland County Commission agrees to allow Commissioner Cobb to use up to two thousand dollars for the purchase of tables and chairs for the community center. Do you, I'll entertain a motion to add this to the agenda. All in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, we're adding that. Whereas, another motion, another resolution, whereas the sheriff has presented these concerns about the rising cost of feeding inmates. Whereas the feeding expense has currently exceeded the amount of funds currently available. Where there is a problem whereby the sheriff cannot apply for emergency feeding fund money. Whereas the funds are available for months, in which the sheriff does not have enough, uh, funds to cover food expenses for inmates. Whereas the amount received cannot exceed eight percent of the actual cost over, substantiated, substantiated, there's another password. By financial records, a maximum of twenty-five thousand per year. Therefore, the Cleveland County Commission agrees to allow Chairman Robinson to sign a cover letter, along with the sheriff to apply for the emergency feeding fund on an as immediate basis.
Motion.
Any discussion? For adding this to the agenda, all, adding this to the agenda, all say aye? Here, I think, motion cares. All right, these two things, now with your vote on.
Hey, uh, did anybody have anything for the sound system?
Right, I, I know that Coach, Coach Joe, Tommy.
What did you say you had to add about?
Last project.
But I did plenty of use of my discretionary money.
Yeah, I asked him, I, 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 it called me, so I gave back your numbers free.
I see that.
You need it quick.
Yep.
Should we not add that?
You can, but if you got resol, you know, give, give somebody a rest.
Can you rather just add it to this resolution, since it's come down, my discretionary?
Right here, one at a quick while we vote on this.
I didn't like the, I didn't like the, what is that? Uh, the head of the sound system.
The sound system, according to Cleveland County.
Hospital.
Sound system.
Did he, he call you? I gave him your number too. All right.
Be ready, I'll give you a quick, too.
It's a right to, it's done there.
All right, so this is going to be G, we're asking, uh, this has been added. Whereas Commissioner Cobb requests the use of her discretionary funds for the purchase of tables and chairs for Rosewood Community Center. And I read this earlier. Therefore, the Cleveland County Commission agrees to allow Commissioner Cobb to use up up to two thousand dollars for the purchase of tables and chairs for the community center. Any motion?
Sir.
Got a second. All in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Motion cares. Whereas, this is the next one, this will be H. Whereas the sheriff has presented concerns about feeding the inmates, and I read this earlier. I'll entertain a motion, a motion.
Sir.
I think he even got to that. Any discussion? All in favor saying aye?
Aye.
You, you're aye, Mr. Hill, I didn't hear you. Uh, motion cares. We're looking to add another. I'll let you read that out.
What's the dollar?
What's the dollar net lease of you on?
Two, three hundred and. Two thousand.
Four for you? So.
Cause I gave you twenty thousand dollars to.
See, that's a total of eight, eight thousand. And I'll let you read that out. Yes, sir, I'm sorry. Don't, don't push it, don't push it. You have your dollars worth for it, yeah. Let's do this, let's take a five-minute pause, we'll just, um, take a recess, and as he finishes up, we'll come back and add this, and some of our group may, well, dispersed to, we'll take a five-minute recess.
That's right.
All right, we're moving, uh, we're back in order here, and, uh, I think Mr. Odenmark, county attorney, is going to read the resolution to be added.
I am aye. Mr. Chairman, whereas Commissioner Cobb, Hill, and Owen requesting use of their discretionary funds for the purchase of equipment to improve the sound system in Cleveland County High School football field. Therefore, the Cleveland County Commission agrees to allow Commissioner Cobb to use up to four thousand, Commissioner Hill to use up to two thousand, Commissioner Owen to use up to two thousand of their respective discretionary funds for the purchase of equipment totaling no more than eight thousand dollars to improve the sound system in Cleveland County High School football field.
I'll entertain a motion to add this to the agenda.
I have a question that we add.
Sir.
Second.
You will be reading again?
No, sir, not necessarily. We appreciate that. Um, all in favor of adding, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, I'll entertain a motion now, pass it.
I might come up with one.
Sir.
Mr. Hill's saying. Any discussion? Now, this funding will go to, like, the, uh, Booster Club, is that how it goes? Or will it go straight to?
It goes, it goes to the school?
School?
It goes to the school.
Okay, it's a capital, root, it's a change, so it'd be a school.
All in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Motion cares, yes. All right. Now, I think we're, is there any other things that you want to add to the agenda? You want to work on that letter for next month in, uh, September meeting?
And what is the deadline?
That is the end of September.
Um, till October.
Oh, the end of October. You can add it to the agenda then, for next month or next year. All right, reports from the staff now. Ms. Cobb.
Okay, uh, mine short and sweet this time, my book. Um, of course, don't forget we have a work session, basically, at ten o'clock next Tuesday, the fifth. Um, I've got a team thing I seen this week, um, it's kind of a, I think we scheduled right now, but it's just, uh, go over, like, uh, and OTCF money, so if there's something else that you're thinking about using, like, some of the OTCF money that's left, if there's something that you want to do with that, that would be a good time to address that. if there's something that you wanna do with that, that would be a good time to address that. Also, one of the things that I'm gonna update them on is that, um, my people are big into saying that they got caught in the downpour trying to get a very, get more across it. We're going to that, and said that they are almost done with their fifth project for the ARCA funds, and I start six, then they, they, they need to start six, because it depends on the weather. Um, let's see. Crystal, Krista and I have a JSHU team meeting this week, actually, next week on the seventh, to discuss logistics for bringing up the room over there. That should be just a pretty easy, you know, just communication with JSHU, try to keep things open for bringing that room out. Um, we also have a county risk assessment that I just found out about. It is available September the ninth, TCS will be here to go over, and I've gotta make sure with Lee and with Fred and everybody that, you know, Krista, that everybody's gonna be available on that day to make your out within last year.
What time is that?
That's September the ninth, I take it, nine thirty AM.
On the commission work session, I know we're gonna be at what, ten? And especially to start working toward a basic route. Now, we still gonna have a three o'clock work session?
Both, right, session and the driving.
Okay, cause I know Rodney, uh, Brown, wanting to bring in the group, talk about that. I think I sent y'all an email, so I need to try to get him to come at that ten o'clock, alright?
Would you ever want to do the work session first, or work on the budget for three, way, don't mind?
Okay, but I didn't know if y'all were trying to come, gonna work on the budget and then come back at three and have a regular work session. And work through, okay? Alright, ten o'clock.
And of course, you know about who spent the bulk of our time doing it the last month, working on, uh, giving rough draft of the budget, and there's a rough draft at this point, um, she's ready to start reading and pull through the lines. Um, I also did anticipate revenues and expenses for the end of the year, in anticipation of that, not actually that's longer than the budget that is to put together. But, um, we'll, of course, assess that next week, that's what we've spent the most of our time off of the last few weeks.
Any questions?
It's time to choose our bank again, I think.
Yeah, you're probably right, and also, that reminds me, we have CDs that are maturing, and I believe that is, questions up here, if I'm not mistaken. We've got CDs or, um, that are, that are, that are weapons.
Do you want to, do you need to, to brief?
Yeah, I wouldn't, I, when is the bridge coming?
That's what I was gonna say, this one, they haven't got leave shop arms yet. Um, and so from the time we get shop arms, bridge team went out.
And maybe they won't create a lot of money.
It, it's, it's, with the normal life, so there's quite a lot of projects, and they say we would just, but, uh, you're not gonna have the, we're just gonna, we're just gonna, not do that. Those cars design and pay the strippers, so you're not allowed to do that.
Okay, well then we just need to press it out, make sure it's in, so we could draw it down, right?
Cause we'll start, we'll start having that some days on.
What about my other bridge?
Okay, that's it, that's it.
Let's get to it, man, there ain't nothing else, I'm gonna get the other bridge.
I know, I'm just over here, I'm just over here, and then I have.
Pass the resolution to start, to start spending that million dollars. I mean, it, we might need to pass the resolution next month to allow you to start spending it, because I'll think of that.
What's the, what's the work session?
You and this. Don't be, don't be, don't be, don't be.
No, you just said, not at the beginning.
And for us, the, uh, ring day, I'll leave you with the deal.
Okay. Any other questions? Lisa?
I really don't have anything for Lisa, but maybe Lisa can pass this on to Emily, and she can have us on next week. But we, down there, we all was in a, well, you know, speaks deal that's talked about, uh, legalized marijuana. We're gonna have to change our policy, and that's something Emily's gonna have to work on. Uh, we had talked about, uh, the hiring insurance, from, the way I understand it, and it may be wrong, but that's something Emily needs to figure out. When you get, when they say you got a job, you got insurance. Then when you pass a drug test, you still got insurance for a month, and it's costing us about six hundred bucks for the insurance on a drug test. We need to move that for ten days or thirty days.
I said, no, thirty, thirty, yeah.
Yeah, so that's something Emily needs to work on, so she might come bring us something next Tuesday.
Jason, can we do that, that, will we change that, like, that part of our policy?
Just whatever she's proposing, have her send it to me.
Yeah. Okay, and, uh, I, I hadn't really had a chance to sit down and look line, line for line on the budget, but some way we need to augment it, we're gonna use our drug settlement money to fund the medical care for the children.
The other, that would be on me.
Just make, as long as it's part of the settlement agreement, that it could be used for that purpose. And I think most of them are related to drug and alcohol rehabilitation, but we just have to double check that. Should.
Bet you, you think you did it.
I did. Just, we have to make sure.
Uh, this is not really something for you, but while I'm, while I'm reading my list, I'm gonna have two that say I'm sticking down. We've already passed the resolution and all for that, so just letting y'all know.
Alright, we all through. Lee?
I really, I'll give you a place.
Okay, any questions for Lee?
I've shot arms, so.
Got, we've got side, one of the side arms up and running, the other one, um.
Benin?
Talked to, yeah, broke arm on, on both of them, but it's more to work, manufacturer problems. One of those back up and running, the other arm should be here, or it's slated to be out of the, out of the manufacturer shop Thursday, and so they'll be getting it out of next week, hopefully get it back into service, so. I didn't mention things without.
Extend warranty on it, something. Can you buy an extended warranty?
I'm sure somebody calling and offering.
Yeah.
You ain't on your dog?
I'm settling it now.
Mr. Owens?
Your office, sir.
Any questions for Mr. Owens? Alright.
I'm putting out bids on our, uh, bids for, uh, our, working on our vehicles. Can we, can we do that, does that happen, our budget, how, when's that, when's that come up to be put back out?
It already has.
You done pitched that guy?
No, it already has, it just automatically reviews, now I can price it later.
It actually ends at the end of September, but it automatically reviews on this, canceling.
And I spoke with the sheriff, and he's good with it, right, Sheriff?
Yes, right now.
Okay, I mean, we can always get out of it with third day notice. Okay. Just writing a letter, and, right now, let the tree be right now.
Sure, I don't think anybody else is gonna entertain it anyway.
Yeah.
Any old business? Discussion items?
Yes, maybe I ask Jason, can you talk to China, just that was my.
Just got it tonight.
Okay.
Yeah, we're hoping a lot of this server use, corn and stone, and I would like that as the commission to review it. So, at the work session, we could, if we have any likes or wants or dislike, you know, let it be done.
We would have to have it open, I mean, it had to have a.
Public meeting.
Public here, right, and we could schedule that with a regular.
He says to get out of the purpose.
We still have to give everything to our attorney to review it and tell us.
From what I see in that thing, a lot of it is, is we're just doing the same thing that partners do. It's out.
It's not connected together.
Well, I said, we could, yeah, try and go out there right behind us, when they're trying to go out there right behind us, and, but, the, listen to what I gotta say for her. They can't, and Lee created me, and Lee had this conversation. They can't come off, they can't go on property unless they can see it from the road. So if that gets changed for the health department, so they can search the private property, then why are we passing this?
Cause right now, they can't, and if we pass this, it gives us the right to be able to go own that property with the law. For now, nobody can, right now, nobody can do it. I mean, you've got these buildings, they've got raw sewage, but nobody, nobody legally can go on, except the sheriff.
Okay.
I mean, I understand that, but why can't we just change it where the health department can do that?
But, but that has to be counted by the department, that entity, not us.
It would be the health department, it likely would be the legislature, we'd have to change that.
Well, my, so from that, that standpoint there, I guess my concern was, even, we go through with this area, we live it, we do the permanent process, we do. But this, instead of us having to go out and do inspections, this should support the health department in what they need, not us doing what they're doing.
Exactly, but, but it's connecting us all together.
And if it comes into the, just being able to access the properties. If, if health department needs help on accessing property, then something would allow us to do that. But as far as a, a installer having to call the health department and say, alright, I'm doing the come inspecting, I mean, not county, I'm doing, I'm gonna come inspecting, I don't think there'd be the inspection side of it.
With that in mind, has anyone told anybody from the health department about this draft, to get their back on it?
I've talked to her several times, and I think, well, you've talked to her too.
But has anybody looked at the draft from the health department?
I have not been part of the draft, and if I ever need to give her, obviously, she's saying, she, you know, she's having, her problem is, her hands are tied.
Okay.
She can't, and, and she sees that it's a problem, especially now with people having these travel titles. She said that's one of the biggest problems she sees for us right now, for those travel titles.
And I'm not saying there's anything wrong, I'm just saying, if we're, part of the intent is to strengthen their ability, then we should get their comments at the same time, incorporate that.
When she gets a complaint, when she pulls up on the road and looks, and if she can't see sewage on the ground, she can't go up and drive and walk around.
Okay.
And so she, basically, she was asking if we could help with that side of it, to where we could access the property and be able to do this, an inspection, and set whatever we need to do to determine if there's sewage on the ground or not.
Can we get her a clean copy of the ordinance and let her come in on it?
Yeah.
Cause then we can incorporate that as well.
Did you even pull all those, uh, permits, fees and stuff, or license fees and all?
He's literally got all that.
I want to tell him, I want to tell him, we're gonna have to, I, but, something, but, what it does, I think, is, the farmer's going for that chicken, you know, different.
If you say something, say they can put that chicken liver, I think, three thousand pieces.
Yeah, the chicken liver got gloves, you got your eyes grown on side of the road, I'm like.
There is one here, it talks about handbags from that one.
Yeah, that's what I was talking about. It says it in any form, you know, so, we'll have to put, except there.
You killed it, this, being, being, not doing it just over.
Why don't we just, we'll, she'll say, we'll allow, we will go with them to access the property.
What I'm gonna say is, why can't they go on there, or tax people can go on there, you're saying that Lee can go on there, and the health department can go on there, that don't make no sense to me.
That's the way I understand it now.
Cause we're not allowed on private property, from my understanding.
Well, I'm not, I can't just go on there.
That's what I understand.
If you do something with this, then I could.
They knew she was.
Why can't we just say, she uh?
Well, she give her own apartment up.
Oh.
You got shit, she don't work.
Like, well, she could go in. Okay.
Right now, nobody has the right to go on that property, but the law.
So we're gonna take a copy of that?
So they make it what he can.
I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't, unless I got a reason to do that.
That's why I said you were letting it too, but.
But I mean, I ain't got time to go to house to house looking for sewage.
Get rid of drafts, so we can get it, but.
What, you need to go test to see if a home is gone?
Yeah, yeah.
Where you've got two home trucks out there, and they're, they're, they're both feeding off the same river, they need to go check the water, cause it's.
I think it is, I think Lee from Baltimore going in there and.
People, people pass me.
Alright, you get everybody back on the same page, and then let's. So, uh, we're working on this, right?
Right.
It's a working piece of document, right?
Yes.
Alright. We'll have, discuss this some in the work session next week, right? Any other discussion items? Hopewell has, we haven't, we don't know anything on Hopewell, no news there, anything else?
Uh, we have, what do I place them? We've got two hundred thirty-five thousand, seven hundred ninety-one dollars left in that last estate ARCA money, check, we have, set aside for income.
How much you have to?
Two hundred thirty-five thousand, seven hundred ninety-one dollars and eighty-two cents to be exact.
And we split it in two halves, permission? Split it up?
Whatever we decide, we do it.
I said we split it up four ways.
Sounds like a work session, I don't think.
Yeah.
Okay. So, uh, anything else? Anything else? Y'all wanna hang out, or we'll go to your house and eat chili or something?
We'll do it, chili.
Chili?
Y'all looking, man, that's enough chili for me.
Yeah, don't worry about it.
I can't hip it, I'll tell you, it's hard.
Alright, I'll entertain a motion to.
I'll make a question, Jer.
That's okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.